Ready? Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of August 21st, 2023, to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January 6th, 2023, according to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranne?
Here.
Councilman Collins?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Here.
Councilwoman Freddie?
Here.
Councilman Potter?
Here.
And Councilman Revulinski?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Oh, will you please rise and join me in a moment of silence, followed by a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Now we have the approval of minutes from the July 24th, 2023 meeting. May I have a, any, oh, actually, any comments or corrections? So then may I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilman Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we have a presentation by Jill Hetzler for the Milltown Education Foundation.
Hey, everybody.
Hi.
I don't have too much to present. I just have a lot of ideas to throw out there. Jill Hetzler for Milltown Education Foundation. We had put in a request to use Borough Park for December 2nd and 3rd this year to try a new event, something to bring community together but also be a fundraiser in lieu of the schools as well. It would be called the Winter Wonderland. It would run for two days from about 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. More of like a family activities day, but on our end, just to fundraise, we'd be charging for things like ice skating. We got the ice skating rink and skates on Lend from North Brunswick. We also have put out a deposit, if it works out, for a train ride to go through part of the fields, and we would decorate that with some of those like holiday blowups and lights and everything like that. And then over in the gazebo area, have Santa there for kids to come visit and give them their holiday wishes, as well as a Toys for Tots drive within that area. The last part of that would be, if allowed, through the kind of walkway between the sports fields, that's just been newly paved, there would be like a vendor bazaar there as well. So we would be charging to have vendors come and sell their holiday things for those two days. So something to get people out of their houses during the wintertime. If it snowed, it'd even be great, because they'd be out there seeing all of this in the snow and participating in it. And then, again, that money would go back into the schools. So just trying something new. A lot of our group has grown over the last three years. Our events have gotten bigger, which is good. We are making a lot of money for the schools, and I'm begging teachers to write those grants and come and use it from us. But we're able to put out a lot there, too. So just another thing to kind of bolster it all up. So that was our request that I had put in a couple months ago and hoping that it works out.
So if, you know, we'll talk, it'll be on the next agenda, but while you're here, I'll open it up to see if anybody has any questions?
Yeah, any questions about it or how it would work?
Any hockey games scheduled?
Yeah, right. I don't think we're regulation size on the rink there.
I have, so the Borough does the tree lighting?
Yes.
Is that going to conflict?
So when I had talked to the Recreation Department, they had said that would be that Friday. So that would kind of like kick it off. Friday would be the tree lighting, and then Saturday, Sunday?
Gotcha.
Those would run right after it. And it doesn't conflict with basketball season starting and all the other things that kind of take the weekends.
So it's a whole holiday weekend?
Yeah. So maybe, maybe if it worked out, yeah.
Okay, good.
So you kind of addressed one of my questions, was, was, what if it snows? But what about, did you want to request any kind of rain date, or is this rain or sun?
So we kind of went back and forth with that. For the vendor's sake, we would just throw out one weekend for them, because I know they have other commitments, too, and not want to have them conflict that. I do know with our, with our Santa, who I know, he's only available that weekend, as well as a couple other years.
That's a busy time of year.
Yes. So we would just stick with that. If it worked, it worked. If it didn't, it didn't. And then maybe be able to build from it the following year.
Gotcha. Okay, great.
I just have a question, and this one goes towards our BA about the insurance associated with, if we have the ice skating, are we going to run into any issues with that, or do you guys have your own insurance for that?
We do have our own insurance. So we provide that a couple times over the year for you guys when we use your facilities. We have our liability insurance, and then we take out special permit insurance, too, when we have bigger events. So we would do that again.
And you're not asking us to provide snow?
I'm asking you to show up with ice skates. Show everybody the tricks. No.
Sounds like a great idea, just hope the weather holds up.
Yeah, so dusting would be nice, not like a blazer.
Similar to the Haunted River Walkout, they have the, what do you call them, the grave markers that can be donated. Are you guys going to have anything like that as well?
That's a great idea. I would put that on my notes. Yes. Some sponsorship there.
There you go.
Little trees.
Yeah, little trees. Yeah, we talked about possibly asking businesses in town to like decorate a tree and then have their name on it. But I know it's a lot to ask, because we ask a lot of the, all of our businesses in town. So maybe it would be, just put their name on it. It'd be probably better.
Yeah. We did it for, was that the MEF, the scarecrow decorating contest?
Yes.
I wonder if we could do that, see if like almost something in the posse along it, around the same time, kind of?
Related to all of that?
Yeah, it's like titled, titled, and it's like after Thanksgiving.
Yeah. I know we're doing the scarecrows again this year, so it's
Maybe, yeah, when that ends.
It's all gonna like
It'd be quick. It'd be quick.
It'd be right behind the other, yeah. Because we have Oktoberfest, then trunk or treat, then right into this.
Yeah.
Like 30 days later.
If it works, maybe we can figure it out, but that'd be interesting to know.
Yeah, no, that'd be cool. I love it.
What's the date of Oktoberfest?
The 14th. Tickets are about to be printed. Let me know if you need it.
Free plug.
September, October?
October.
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 The only other thing I'm thinking is just the coordination with the electric utility, obviously, if they're going to have to provide pole drops or anything like that for vendors. I don't know what's, what amperage we have available along that field fence line, if anyone needs anything.
Sure.
So that'll all be in the
Four to eight, it's going to be dark out.
That's part of the application.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the application, I feel that I did request for the lights to be on in the lot and any access to the actual poles that are there. But again, we don't, we don't know what the vendors might need versus what we want for our end of it.
Yeah, typically
It would become part of it, too.
Yeah, what you could probably do is just have the vendors bring generators if they need to.
Just to have, yeah.
Just to have as a backup, yeah. But there are, yeah, there are drops on poles, but there's not many. And you don't want to have all those wires all over the place.
Yes.
Yeah, so. We can all, we can all talk.
Yeah, there's time to, you know, work out all the details, for sure. Sounds great, though. Anyone else have any questions? All right. Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. We'll move on to comments from the audience on resolutions. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please identify yourself to the clerk and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the agenda. Seeing none, I will close audience comments and move on to bills and claims. Will the clerk please read by title only, Bill Resolution 209, 2023?
Resolution 209, 2023, is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $6,912,921.2.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move that the bill list be approved this night.
I second.
A motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I had a question. On the TV service, it says they have Optima down there. Is that right? Where they pay the Optima bill down there at the senior center?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Do you know if we ever got the bottled water down there?
As far as I know, yes.
Oh, okay, because the president had a question about that. So let me see if I got any questions.
We had a problem with some delivery, but I thought that that was resolved.
Okay.
And Optima is actually for the cable, for the internet.
Let me see.
Anyone else?
Oh, that's it.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranne?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Freddie?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Motion carries to pay the bills.
Thank you. Now we have the introduction of resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature, and having been reviewed by the Borough Council, will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Are there any questions? Does anyone want to pull any resolutions from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull 214, 222, 223, 225, and 226.
All right. Say that again?
214, 222, 223, 225, and 226.
All right. Anyone else?
I guess I'd like to pull 215.
Okay.
I wanted to pull 227 for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, and 226. Me? You got that?
Well, I, sort of the order thing, so let me, 214, 215, 222, 223, 226, and 227?
225 also.
And 225. Yeah. Okay.
All right. So, um...
Do you want me to call those numbers for you in order, ma'am?
I have 214, 222, 23, 225, 2, oh, I'm sorry, 214, 215, 222, 223, 225, 226, and 227. So, uh, but the, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the borough clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the borough clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the borough clerk. You've heard the reading of the consent resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, make a motion that these resolutions be adopted.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Will the clerk please recall the roll?
Council President Zambranne?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Freddie?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
And Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
And motion carries, and we will now do the resolutions that we, for pull.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 214, 2023 by title?
214 is a resolution authorizing consulting services with respect to development of connection fees for the water sewer utility and the electric utility.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, make a motion that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilman Freddie. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I asked for this one to be pulled because I have a concern here with paying $15,000 for someone to tell us what we should charge to connect our water sewer and electric for new customers. I understand that this is broken down. We have three utilities, water, sewer, and electric, and $5,000 apiece, but it seems to me, based on the information provided here by PKF, O'Connor Davies, and their proposal, that I don't think they fully grasp the amount of work with how easy this is to do. Basically, if you break it down according to the junior associate rate at $110 per hour, we're looking at 136 hours to provide this study. And in all honesty, I mean, they're talking about what is the base and historical cost. I mean, I would think that this is something we could easily ascertain by asking our DPW or utility director. Determine the number of service units. Well, I mean, that's irrelevant, because it's not about how many new units we're putting in. It's, this is all about how much does it cost us to put in a new meter and a new, for a new customer. So whether there's a development with 900 units, or a development with 100 units, or three new houses being built, the connection fee associated with those should be the same. It doesn't matter how many we're going to have.
Does the Utility Committee want to weigh in on this?
Well, looking at it, it shows it's not to exceed 15,000. It doesn't say we're going to be paying 15,000, correct? According to the SRF paper. So it's, it's, it obviously could be less than 15,000. And who's going to be monitoring it? Like, basically, who's going to be monitoring them as they do this survey?
Well, it's, so it's a little bit more involved than, it's, deals with a bunch of historical data, future anticipated expenses, other costs that are associated with the different entities that we do business with, such as New Brunswick, so gathering information from there, and
What type of information would be needed from New Brunswick?
Their, what they've put into the system as well, because all of the costs revolve around that, the cost of the water. So what it
That's our water rates, though. This isn't about water rates, it's about connectivity.
Well, it is, but it's, it's a required calculation that honestly is supposed to be done from time to time to come up with those amounts. We can't just arbitrarily choose which, what we want to, and I agree with you. It's not based on how many new units we're going to have, because there's no way, that's an unknown number anyway. It's not really based on that.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this study as a result of Councilman Revulinski, you're asking to do a study to look at our water system in order to prepare to sell it?
I didn't ask for a study. I said we should, I said we should consider amending the rates because of the fact that we're going to have some developments coming in, and I bet our rates are outdated. Now, I look at the five bullet points that are on here.
Right. So we asked to do a study. You asked us to do a study, and we're doing a study.
When I said we should look at the rates, I didn't think you guys were going to go out and spend $15,000 for someone to tell us how much it costs to put in a meter, dig a hole, and connect the pipe.
It's, it's not, but it's, it's not only about digging a hole and putting in a meter. It's also to go back and look at data from the past that you can use sort of like as a placeholder, so you can go moving forward, taking into account any additional units or that come into the town. So you don't want to do it, you know, you don't want to do it like, for want of a better word, half-assed. You want to do it like properly. And you want to make sure that you look at everything, so you do it once. And it's been quite a number of years that it hasn't been done. It's actually something that should be done, you know, every five years, every three years.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I got a question. What do the other towns do that have their own electric utility? Do they use this service?
This is, this is a legal requirement, and Mike could probably, I hate to kick it off to you, but you've been through this process here before. We've had to have this done, and it is a legal requirement that these figures be analyzed every so often for those charges, because you can't arbitrarily charge, you know. So every town is really required to do that, that has their own utility.
It's our understanding that there is a recommendation that these numbers be recalculated on a yearly basis. That's not a regulation that's absolute, but our understanding is it's a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion?
So there is, or there is not a regulation out there, statute, that says that we have to do this regularly, or that we have to have an outside consultant come up with these numbers for us? This isn't something we can do in-house?
The analysis is usually done by the auditors for the town or for the authority, which I think this is their, your auditor. And typically, what is calculated is the total indebtedness of the borough over the last certain time period, as the requests do, and divided by the number of equivalent dwelling units, which is something we may need to provide assistance to them unless they have experience. But we have done this calculation before and assisted many towns with it. So it's a fairly high-level analysis, Rich, that has to be done. It's not something that you can just do quickly.
Anyone else? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranne?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Freddie?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Nope.
Motion carries. Will the clerk please read 215, 2023 by title?
215, 2023, is authorizing certain personnel actions in the construction department?
Excuse me. You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that this resolution be adopted.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just was wondering what effect this is going to have on the Public Works Department. I don't know if we agreed to discuss that with Mr. Revulinski, Rich. Do you, have you any feedback with this?
This is a construction
No.
This is a construction gentleman.
No, I received no notification or anything like that from the DPW department or the head of that department regarding this position, or the changes.
Anyone else? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranne?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Freddie?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
And Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read 2020, uh, 222, 2023 by title?
222, 2023, authorizing certain personnel actions in the water sewer utility.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Council President Zambranne. Any discussion?
Yes, I asked for this one to be pulled because, looking at 222 and 223 at the same time, I have some questions.
And you're aware that you get this so that you can ask questions, especially regarding person, excuse me, especially about personnel privately? So that where anyone's available to answer your questions before the meeting on Monday?
And we can certainly do it here, too.
I agree. But, you know, personnel sometimes becomes a little bit more of a
We can discuss more about the Personnel Committee and their actions and course of business later on. I've got one pulled for that specific reason.
Great. Looking forward to it.
So 222, we have a person here who is going to be on as a Sewer Repairer 1, Year 3. And I understand this is a lateral move within the department, and we're just amending it basically for the title. And I'm curious, because there was no resume associated with this resolution, how long this person has been an employee of the Borough and performing water or sewer work?
So the position part of this was labor, which this is the equivalent of a labor. And he's been here three years, he's step three.
So do you want to wrap up?
The Labor Department, I want to say a little over a year.
So do you want to wrap up 222? Because my, my curiosity really stems from 223. And reviewing that resume, and that person's being proposed here at a step 5, which is more money, and you're saying that the person on 222 has been in the Borough for two years, or three years. This person who's coming in under 223 has, according to their resume, only performed any sort of work associated with utilities for three years, but yet they're being proposed at a year-five rate.
Yes.
So that's, that's my confusion.
Dave, you want to speak to this?
Well, it's, is it personnel or more utilities?
Utilities.
I mean, he's, the one coming in is, actually, the one, Peter's coming in as a lateral, and the other one's coming in as, you know, as a
Brand new.
Brand new.
Brand new employee.
Yeah.
I understand that, but we have a person coming in at a five-year experience level, when their resume says they've got three years. And we've got a person here who's been within the Borough for three years, who's just moving over to a three-year.
I'm sorry. It's not necessarily a five-year experience level, but the type of experience that this person brings to the table warrants that salary. So our current experience for the labor in the department is limited. The person coming in is able to rebuild hydrants, which we don't have, other than the prior new hire, to actually do the water main breaks, which prior to the hire before this, most of them were subbed out. So this person brings that experience to the table. That's going to save the Borough a lot of money with farming these types of repairs out, so that they can be done in-house. This is the vision for the department, to get the experienced people. And unfortunately, that's what it costs to do business, to get that level of experience.
And that's, and that's how that was explained in Utility Committee meetings over the last, you know, two months, three months. So when this, you know, you have to remember, we put out two postings, we hired someone about a month and a half ago, two months ago, and then this gentleman came along. So obviously, if you have somebody of that skill level who can come in, hit the ground running, you take that opportunity.
And also teach, teach the labor that's there now.
Yeah, and mentor as well. Yeah, you take that opportunity, especially if on the, on the flip side, you're going to be bringing in somebody who's going to save you money by not like farming out every hydrant replacement or every water main break, so.
And, Janette, correct me if I'm wrong, this also came as a high recommendation of a person that we currently have in the department as well?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
How much money have we spent over the last year and the year before that, the year before that, on hydrant and these sorts of repairs farming them out?
I'd have to get those numbers for you. I don't have, I don't have them either.
And how much with their benefits?
But I can tell you right now, there's a, I can tell you right now that there's $23,000 worth of, for two hydrant repairs that are on the bills list.
Yep.
Or have been farmed out. I don't know if it's been paid yet, just in the past couple of months.
So with a salary of $62,627.19, what is the actual cost to the Borough when we add on all of their benefits package? Because your email said we're going to save $100,000 a year, and I got to think that with benefits, we'll probably push it to 90 as it is, so.
True. But then also, we, we also have to have a full staff to be able to do the things that we need to do there, such as, one of the problems that we've had with the utilities is that we haven't had enough people on staff, or we've worn down the staff we did have. We have standby on the weekends, and we have all of these things that need to be taken care of. So it will be a savings, because you would have needed an additional person otherwise. So you can have people that aren't skilled, that eventually will work up the ladder and make this money, and not necessarily be able to have the return on the investment, not through their, their own fault, but because the circumstances of the department. Or we can have the trained people come in, still spend the money, but also have the savings on the back end.
Well, I'm still confused as to why you have someone as a step 5 that only has three years' experience. And I understand this is what it costs to get people, but then shouldn't we be changing our pay rates for the steps?
That's a contractual matter, that's.
But we're bringing someone in who doesn't have five years' experience, and we're saying we're going to pay him for five years' experience, while we have someone with experience.
Well, actually, Janette just made it clear that the steps are not correlated to a year of experience here or in this industry. But the person, I looked at their resume because it was included in the packet, and their experience is impressive with quite a bit of leadership that you have to take into account in the, in the steps, not just the labor portion of their experience.
I believe it was a foreman as well, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we're getting the resume here. It's a, it's a foreman from 2020 to present, and before that had nothing in their job history, going back to 2055, which I believe is the title.
Right. We, I really don't think this is the place to discuss somebody's resume. Let's move on. And again, if we had, if we had concerns about somebody's resume, that should have been brought to the attent, to someone's attention before.
Yeah, that's why you have these kind of questions that you can ask anyone. When you get the packet on Friday morning, you've got Friday, Saturday, Sunday to ask these questions.
Anyone else have any discussion?
I just had a question on Resolution 222. It says he's going laterally, you said?
Yes.
But we could really give him another step, then, can't we?
No, it's, it's, it's a labor's position in the Water Department. It's the same position, it's just a different title.
But he's still at range 1, is that what you're saying?
He's at level, he's at step 3.
Step 3, okay.
So we have tests that you take in order to achieve the next step now?
No, it's automatic.
Automatic out?
Through the contract.
Which is
So at every anniversary for them, at whatever date you're hired, you automatically move up to the next step.
So again, it's annually.
Correct. But it doesn't mean that somebody has to come in and start at that level. You just hired a new officer at a step 3, and he came from someplace else. So I, I, you know, it depends on qualifications as well, when you're bringing somebody into the department. Once you're here, he's not going to skip from step 5 to the next position of the step 5. Then he'll go through the same
And I believe that this, this person that, that we're discussing was interviewed by the head of the Utility Department, correct?
Was the Director of DPW. Correct. And any concerns from him? No, actually, he was very excited to. And I think this is a good step to make a more robust utility department, to keep our water lines going, to have people on standby. And we know we've struggled with that for a long time, and we've been looking to make a good department. So, I hope that, you know, getting people in place will be a good first step for that.
And providing quality service to our town.
Exactly. Thank you. So, now, we read the resolution, now we just have to, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yeah, this is for Resolution Two Twenty-Two. Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revolinski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Counsel Two Twenty-Two.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read Resolution Two Twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, by title?
Two Twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, is authorizing certain personnel actions on the water and sewer utility.
Heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Potter, second by Council President Zambranah. Any discussion?
My comments from the previous discussions still stand.
Okay.
Just wish this person the best of luck if they are to be appointed this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Revolinski?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, will the clerk please read Resolution Two Twenty-five, twenty twenty-three, by title?
Two Twenty-five, twenty twenty-three, is authorizing certain personnel actions, the public safety crossing guard.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution. Second.
A motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilwoman Peretti. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I asked for this one to be pulled just so I could let the general public know that this position is actually for my mother to be a crossing guard, and as such, I will be abstaining from the vote.
That's great. Welcome, Mrs. Revolinski. Or almost welcome. She has. We highly recommend that you go for her. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revolinski?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I know we struggled to get crossing guards, so we're thrilled to have her. That's great.
Welcome, Mrs. Revolinski.
Next, will the clerk please read Twenty Twenty, Two Twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, by title?
Two Twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, authorizing certain personnel actions, the municipal clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion. Does this resolution be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilman Collins. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I asked for this one to be pulled because of my displeasure with the matter in which this hire has been brought forth and the manner in which the Personnel Committee has acted. I think it's quite distasteful that we've advertised and interviewed back in early July for this. The rest of council, although in the Personnel Committee, have not had the opportunity to meet or interview with this person, interview their resume. Furthermore, which I think is of most importance, is with the clerk position being such a high priority role within the borough, I want to know why we didn't take matters into our hands earlier if we stopped accepting resumes back in July and not have a private session or a closed session in order to move things along here. It's my understanding that our current clerk, and the only person currently working in the office, is up at August 31st, and yet our new clerk is to start on September 1st. So, we'll have absolutely no overlap, no cross-training, no nothing. And we're bringing in a person into a position that is a very task-oriented and very difficult position with absolutely no one there as oversight. I think this is just a terrible move on the Personnel Committee's part by not pushing things forward faster, especially when we had the hire and the recommendation back in July. And I think it's a bad move on the Personnel Committee's part by not trying to encourage our current clerk to stay on longer so we'd have some overlap considering the staffing issues we're having in that department.
Well, thank you for noting your concerns. I will just say that the current clerk came in and was not interviewed by the full council. The current clerk also came in when the prior clerk was not here, and I think she has done a phenomenal job. So, you know, I understand that there may be some concerns. The way that it's set up is that we have a Personnel Committee, and we have, you know, we interviewed, and we chose out of that interview process over the summer someone, and which we've done with many important positions, the tax assessor, several other positions, including the business administrator, CFO. So, that's, and as you'll recall, before we had a Personnel Committee, we used to just put out a notice, and it was only the BA and maybe some other council people that would get involved in the interview process. So, we, you know, the Personnel Committee, which is myself, Council President Zambranah, and Councilwoman Collins, did the interviews, you know, and then we made the offer. And as we've mentioned here, you know, until it gets on to a resolution, you can feel free to vote yes or no. But we are, the Personnel Committee is making the recommendation for that candidate. So, if you feel that you need more time, then, you know, you can feel free to vote how you wish.
Well, I think.
Does anyone else have any other comments?
That we've waited this long when we interviewed back in July.
No, we didn't wait. We.
But we did. We did. It's August 21st today.
Well, we only had one meeting, and the prior meeting, we did not have anyone.
And we could have called for another meeting to try and expedite this process. We are bringing someone in who, you know, is new to the borough, is not a transfer within the borough, to a position which is a full-time position that requires a lot of work and a lot of experience, and we're doing it with absolutely no overlap. And I think that's a complete disservice to the town.
No, I think, but that's your opinion. That's not the opinion of the Personnel Committee. So, although I respect your, you know, how you feel, again, this is the first time that I'm hearing.
No, I sent you an email the other day, actually, two weeks ago, asking about it, and I was asked, why am I bringing it up now?
I've got an email, and after that, I didn't get any more emails after that, so I don't really know what your beef is with this particular candidate. It's not like we had 10 people apply, Rich. We had, like, two people.
We had four, and then two interviewed, correct?
Two people, two people applied, two people interviewed.
And one didn't have clerk license.
Yes.
So, the only person that applied with a clerk license.
Were you in that meeting, Rich? I don't remember seeing you in that meeting.
No, in fact, I only found out about it afterwards in discussions with Councilman Collins.
There you go.
No one else brought it forward.
There you go, so it's fine.
Not one other person brought this up.
You're butt hurt, you're butt hurt because you're not part of the Personnel Committee.
That's enough.
My butt's just fine.
But no, both, that's enough.
I just had a question, Jeanette, on this, the second line. She's the deputy register. Who's the register?
Kathy Beardsley.
Oh, I see. So, she's the deputy, okay.
Anyone else? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Revolinski?
I wish you the absolute best of luck.
Motion carries.
And finally, we have Two Twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
Two Twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, is authorizing CME Engineering to proceed with certain projects, Twenty Twenty-three West Fouch, road improvements. Did I learn that in three years? Is it Fouch?
Fouch.
Like the general.
See? I knew it. I'm like, oh, no, I should have practiced.
Like the French generally.
We'll make sure the new clerk knows that. Totally.
Madam Mayor, I have requested that this resolution be pulled just to get a little bit more detail from our engineer, perhaps, on the results of particularly the borings and the examination of the sewer line and the recommendations that resulted.
Certainly. As you may remember, the mayor and council authorized us to obtain subsurface investigation regarding the soil's potential rock beneath the roadway in West Fouch. We advanced those evaluations sometime, probably three, four weeks ago, maybe a little more, actually, six weeks ago. And the results were pretty much in line with what we expected. We were concerned about potential organics below the roadway. We did not find them. We did, however, find soils which are not conducive to moisture content. They basically, when exposed to water or any other moisture and mechanical disturbance, they begin to liquefy and potentially create settlements. Couple of things that we did find, though, that the sanitary sewer is founded on much more firmer soil, more granular soil. That's why we have an experience of settlement on the main. However, on the laterals, there's been significant settlement, including over above the laterals where the sidewalks and the curbs are. Some of that water emanates from the ground, which is just a natural occurrence. The other is from leaking from the water services from each one of the older homes there. One of the things that came out of the evaluation when we did our survey work as a result of our plan design is that the sanitary sewer runs from Main Street down to Albert and makes a right turn. We originally thought it went down to the end of the cul-de-sac, and further investigations also determined that the pipeline that exists from the cul-de-sac drains actually from the cul-de-sac into Albert. It's been installed or was installed later on, not with the original pipeline. So, what our recommendation now is to construct the improvements from Albert to Main Street, which would include reconstructing the roadway, replacing the sanitary sewer, replacing all the water services with brand-new services because the water line had been lined several years ago, putting in new curbs and sidewalks and regrading and topsoil and seeding or sod. With the help of your borough administrator, we're able to work on the dollars, both from the NJDOT and what she had allotted from utilities. We believe he has sufficient funds to do that work with that remaining money. So, it's actually been helpful to have the investigation done, and it worked out in your favor. What our recommendation to do be is to go from Albert to Main Street, and then under the funding you have already applied for at NJIT, you can finish the cul-de-sac from Albert to the cul-de-sac and also hop over to East Fouch. So, that's our recommendation, and that's, we're obviously moving along quickly because we have a deadline to get the applications and package to NJDOT so that we get authorized to advertise and get the bids out.
Yeah, Councilwoman O'Donnell, Madam Mayor, the Utilities Department also met with CME on these recommendations, and we're in full agreement as well.
Yeah, thank you. The, you know, this goes back a ways, so I was on the DPW or Utilities Committee when the discussions were underway about doing the borings. And the results are not what I was expecting and anticipating, like, you know, amateur engineer hat on. But I'm very glad that they reflected valuable information and that we're able to proceed and solve some of the dipping of the road on a long-term basis. So, thank you for the additional explanation.
My pleasure. Mike, I had a question. Now, are you going to replace the sidewalks and the curbs from Main Street to Albert Avenue?
Yes.
Are you going to replace the sidewalks and the curb? Now, when you get to the cul-de-sac, are you just going to replace the curbs or the sidewalks?
Well, we had asked your Public Works Director what his opinion, because obviously, he's panels all the roadwork and curbs throughout town. His recommendation is the curb be done. As a result, changing the curb, the sidewalks will be done, too. So, there'd be a similar improvement down at the cul-de-sac with the other faces.
Just nothing underneath.
That's right.
Thanks.
So, we're probably, we're going to recommend that line the sewer there, not necessarily replace it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, Mike.
Now, Mike, just out of curiosity, what's our timeframe for putting this out to bid?
We have to have it out and awarded by sometime in early October, so we are ready to go.
And do you need anything else further from us in order to proceed with that?
No, sir, thank you. We have enough guidance, and we appreciate everybody's input.
Great, looking forward to it. Anyone else? So, we're now, will the clerk, we're back to Two Twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I do need a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
So close. Who was that? Motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilman Potter. Now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Revolinski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That's it. So, now, I see we already adopted in the consent agenda Two Twenty-eight, but we have a special, a couple of special guests here, so is, are you here to explain anything, or do?
So, good evening, everyone. I was here in case there were any questions or issues. We're going to have a couple of more opportunities to discuss this item. It'll be forwarded, it's been forwarded now to the Planning Board, so we'll be having probably a lengthy conversation, I would assume, at our next Planning Board meeting about the South Main Street plan. And then it'll be back after that with any comments, recommendations that the Planning Board may have. And the council will have its opportunity to go through the formal ordinance process, so I'm sure we'll have another chance to field any questions or comments during that time as well.
Thank you. So, just for those who are at home and are listening, Two Twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three was a resolution transmitting a proposed redevelopment plan for the Main, South Main Street rehabilitation area in the borough of Milltown to the Milltown Planning Board. So, if you have any questions, we have our planner here. But, you know, the place to come and it'll be discussed more is at the Planning Board meeting, which will be on September 2nd, I believe. Six.
Six.
Six. Okay, September 6th, so. And then it will come back to the council after that. Okay, thank you, John. Appreciate it. All right, now, we have our council and professional reports. We'll start with the Department of Public Safety, Councilwoman Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will begin with the Rescue Squad report. In July, the Rescue Squad responded to 115 calls, 68 in Milltown, 33 along the Turnpike, and 14 in the form of mutual aid. And we thank the Rescue Squad for providing EMS services at the 85th Annual Middlesex County Fair. The squad is proud to announce that seven of the graduating cadets have taken the next step and become full squad members this summer. They will continue to serve their communities as they begin the next chapters of their academic careers with the start of the school year. If anyone has any billing questions, they should call Cornerstone, our billing company, with any questions or concerns. Their number is 877-214-6018. You can also access their website, meaning Cornerstone's website, at milltownrescuesquad.org website. Please do not call the Milltown Police Department with billing or recruitment questions. Milltown Rescue Squad will begin accepting applications for the fall onboarding process. Anyone interested in learning about joining the Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruitment@milltownrescuesquad.org to learn more. And they're always happy to answer any questions. The squad has had a busy few weeks, and we thank them for all that they do. Now, a report from the Milltown Fire Department. This month, there were three drills, one meeting, 17 fire calls, two special assignments, five work details, resulting in 28 incidents. I'm not sure which one of those was a visit by the mayor and the councilwoman, but we did go over and get to see some of the new equipment and apparel that was purchased with a combination of our grant money and efficient use of capital spending. This year to date, there have been 189 incidents. This year to date, total man-hours, 2,694.9. The nature of some of the calls that were responded to were, since this is the report from July, obviously, the July 4th standby for fire protection, the fireworks, different activations of fire alarms and CO alarms, motor vehicle accidents, including an overturned vehicle, smoking wires, chemical odors, excuse me, a transformer fire and a structure fire. There were five equipment checks that were in the form of their work detail. Their drills were at fire headquarters and at the Cottage Avenue facility. We would like to welcome two members, Christopher Jones and Joseph Iom, and two cadet members, Mason Battala and Charlie Barnes. Thank you all for joining and serving our community. There will be a fire department live-fire training scheduled in October. And vehicle and equipment maintenance updates will be in the next report, as well as building and grounds update. At every council meeting, I always mention that members are needed. Candidates interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse Monday nights at 6:30 or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. And, oh, I did want to mention a thank you to the fire department for participating in the splashdown party at the Borough Park. Everyone had a good time, thoroughly enjoyed the spray, the mud, and the rainbows. And I had a couple of follow-ups I wanted to provide from our public safety forum. Security cameras were budgeted in this year's capital. So, to the resident who asked us about speeding in the Borough Park parking lot, when those security cameras come in and are installed, we hope that adds a different layer of enforcement. and are installed, we hope that adds a different layer of enforcement options there. And for the resident who asked about electronic signage to be placed on North Main, near or north of the Garver Crosswalk, our signage is currently mostly in use for the reminders about construction-related delays and detours, but it's also a bit narrow in that area that was specified, so we are looking into other options for you. A big thank you to the resident who suggested sending a flyer to all of the households with traffic safety reminders. We got that out in the tax bills that went out this month, and gratitude for our business administrator, Jeanette Larson, for quickly recognizing that was an opportunity to have something go out, as well as to Lieutenant Johnson and Chief Cannelli for composing the content. And a reminder to slow down and pay attention whether you are driving, walking, or biking. Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yes, it was very nice to go to the firehouse and see, what was it, six new full gear?
Turnout gear.
Turnout gear, right. So, and that was thanks to the Milltown Fire Department, who submitted the request for a grant, so they got that. We also have some capital planning to make sure that what happened last time doesn't happen where all of their gear becomes obsolete in the same year, and it becomes a really big bill, so with careful planning, we will make sure that our fire department has the correct gear, the updated gear, and it looks great, and we thank them for being so proactive on this. And also, thanks to the Recreation Department for setting up the hose down, and a big thank you to the Fire Department for being there, and it was great to see so many kids having fun and, you know, getting sprayed by the fire.
Yes, and I forgot to mention that Lieutenant Dan from the Milltown PD came to the splashdown party as well, so it was good to see him.
It was great, thank you. All right, next we have the Department of Utilities, Councilwoman Dave Potter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first report is from John Eckert, from our Electric Department. Power was lost at the Bank of America on Ryder's Lane. Fuses feeding the transformer were blown. The customer had their transformer and underground cables tested. Borough lineman re-energized the transformer after testing and concluded it was safe to do so. Borough lineman installed a new pole on Garrettson Circle to replace the broken one. Transfer of wires were completed. A blown transformer caused an outage on Violet Terrace. A contractor was called to replace the bad unit to restore power. Routine patrol found roughly 25 more utility poles with phone and cable wires dangling in the reach of children and pedestrians. Wires were removed. Verizon installed a new pole to facilitate an underground service and infrastructure improvements for a house being built on JFK Drive. A larger transformer was installed, and a wire transfer to the new pole was completed. Six streetlights were repaired. Two new LED streetlights were installed to replace the broken ones. Testing was performed on the borough's four emergency diesel generators. Department members responded to several calls for hanging wires. A service drop was raised for a customer on George Street. Oil testing for PCB contaminants was performed on our inventory of blown transformers to begin the disposal process. Contractor was also hired to remove the last of the substation transformers at the old DPW property. American flags were maintained. A GFI receptacle was prepared at Albert Avenue Park. Numerous work orders associated with billing issues were completed, and final readings of closed accounts were performed. Substation, daily checks were performed. Maintenance of egress lighting is continuing. Contaminant cell sump pumps were checked for proper operation. Vegetation management continued at the substation and remote areas where there are ground-mounted transformer installations. Several poles were inspected for safety issues. Inventory was reviewed, and necessary materials were ordered. Utilities assisted the Building Department with customer issues. Practical and safety training is being provided to the new groundmen. Line clearance was performed in several areas to eliminate branch-to-wire contact. The Electric Department assisted the Water Department in troubleshooting a chlorine feed pump and getting a backup unit programmed and online. A defected unit was sent out for evaluation. A reminder to our residents, if your electric meter is concealed by bushes or foliage, it cannot be read. Clear access is required in front of this equipment for the safety of meter readers. Bushes and tall plants can be habit for bees, ticks, and other biting insects. In addition, if you have a locked fence around your yard or a pet in your backyard, this will prohibit us from reading your meter. Borough ordinance states that meters must be accessible to borough employees. If you have a pet, your gate or entry must have a sign indicating so. This is for our safety, as well as the security of your pet. You also have the option of reading your own meter, or taking a picture of it and sending it to the Building Department to avoid late builds and estimated readings. Talk to the Utility Billing Department at 732-828-2100, extension 183, for details. Madam Mayor, my second report is from Don Herman, from the Water Sewer Department. PSCNG continues to work throughout the town that require markouts. Monitoring of the pump station occurs on a regular schedule. Daily work orders are completed in a timely manner. Church Street Pump Station, Pump 2A, is out for repairs. Water main break repaired on Sherman Avenue, resulting in water shut-off and boil water advisory. The water main relining and replacing program on Highland Drive has begun, has begun and will continue for some time. Water main break on Main Street was repaired by removing a broken, abandoned lead water line to the old Michelin plant. Fire hydrants at 10 and 48 Lakewood were replaced, and bush and cleared, bush was cleared and removed from an area over Milltown's 12-inch water main to allow for easy access. Madam Mayor, regarding the Utilities Committee, with the approval of Resolutions 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2023, I'd like to welcome John Murray and Peter Gilson to the Water Sewer Department for the water utility projects. It appears that the work on Highland Drive, as we mentioned, has begun and will continue well into September. Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Ravelinski, sorry, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Ravelinski and myself had a meeting with PSCNG on July 31st to discuss the current issues and future plans. A follow-up meeting is in process and is being planned. And just a reminder, if there are any property issues due to PSCNG work, please report this in the information to report of concern on the Borough website. Planning Board, the last meeting was on August 2nd. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 6th. And regarding Milltown, 4th of July, we have a final wrap-up meeting with our Emergency Services and DPW Departments this Thursday, August 24th. And that concludes my report.
Is that all? Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, next we have the Department of Public Works and Recycling, Councilman Rich Ravelinski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Report for the month of July and early August, Department of Public Works, crosswalk painting is ongoing. Double yellow lines around Crossing Guard stations are being painted, as well as the curbs around the school. Low-hanging branches on various roadways have been trimmed. The DPW staff assisted the Water Department with a water leak and repairs on Sherman Avenue and Main. Street sweeping is ongoing. Dead and unsafe trees were cut down on William Street, Vern, Townsend, Benhart, and in front of the Milltown Museum. The footbridge was cleaned, and repairs made. Tree and brush cleanup throughout the town and at the firehouse, Historical Society, Growlett Drive, Municipal Building, and the prior location of the Public Works Garage has been performed. Catch Basin cleaning has been completed for this quarter. Catch Basin on JFK was repaired, and the next recycling dates are August 24th, September 7th. I'd also like to add, please do follow the bulk pickup dates, so that our crews can get around to regular garbage pickup and put that stuff out on the appropriate days. In addition to those, I'd like to announce that the transformers over here at the old DPW yard and electric substation are currently being worked on, and they'll be removed out of here shortly. I believe the testing of the oils in there has come back a-okay for us to get moving with those coming out. I spoke to the chief the other day about the older surplus vehicles over there as well, and we're going to be looking to put that on for a resolution in September to finally get that equipment out of there and bring us one step closer to hopefully opening that place up for some better use. In our discussions with PSCNG, thank you, Councilman Potter, for bringing this up, we did talk about some of the ongoing work that they're going to have, and part of that work, just the residents are aware, is going to be at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Main Street. We made the recommendation that this work be performed at night, because obviously, that is not an area that we want to have clogged up, especially around the school time, and also scheduling and the coordination for South Main Street up to East Lakewood, to make sure that isn't done during the school hours as well, to try and help facilitate some of that morning traffic. Restoration work, I spoke with Ralph Jasnowski earlier this week about it, and they're going to start over on Ford Avenue and then West Church, and try and move themselves down Clay Street as fast as possible and as soon as possible, in order to try and get out of the way and make a nice clear route for all the folks dropping their kids off for that first week of school. Our fingers are crossed that that occurs, but obviously no guarantees. In addition to DPW, I have a library report from Debbie Miller. Adult yoga will be tomorrow, August 22nd, at 9:15 a.m. Dog Days of Summer Bingo is tomorrow as well. This is at 6:30 p.m. The drop-in computer help and bring-your-device is on Wednesday, August 23rd and 30th, at 10:30 a.m. The library staff is busy working on fall programs. Please follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and the Milltown Public Library website. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Councilman John Collins.
No report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next is the Department of Parks and Recreation, Councilman James Fred.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, from the Recreation Department. Tenants camp has been completed and was a great success. Albert Avenue Summer Camp also finished this month on the 11th. New fall programs are starting up. The flag football, ages 5 to 7, and ages 8 to 10 will be starting up this fall, so it will be two different groups. 5 to 7 is going to be labeled as flag football squirts, and 8 to 10 will be foundation. The Borough Pool Last Day will be Monday, September 4th, Labor Day, and as always, there'll be an end-of-the-year pool party for all the kids and families in attendance. All fall activities are now open for registration on the Community Pass website. The September 11th Memorial Event will be held at the American Legion, as always, that's usually at 7 p.m., and for any additional details, please contact the American Legion. The, as mentioned, the, a couple times already about the spray event, good success, happy to be able to partner with the Public Works and Fire Department for that, and Public Safety and Fire Department, so looking forward to doing that for future events. For committee reports, the revitalization committee, Milltown Day is fast approaching. Saturday, September 30th, is Milltown Day. For those residents who normally expect it on the first Saturday in October, we moved it up a week this year, just for hopefully getting better weather, and hopefully avoiding having a rain date and pushing it out later into October when it is not advantageous for weather. So, once again, September 30th, that's last Saturday in September. As always, have a lot of vendors going to be participating. People have a small business or have a personal, whether it's a side business, or a craft business, or what have you, please feel free to register as a vendor. There's applications on the Milltown website. There will be food trucks aplenty, and there's also going to be a lot of field activities. We're going to have some inflatables from a new company coming in to support Milltown, and overall, it'll be a very, very fun event for families of all ages, so please make sure to come out, meet your neighbors, and meet a lot of local businesses that we can show a lot of support for. And that also, a portion of that does get used for the finance of revitalization committee, which efforts go towards the Milltown planters that you see along Main Street that came up beautifully this year, the planters themselves that house those, the, where have dog bowls that go outside of businesses to make Main Street more walking-friendly, and a multitude of other projects that are hopefully going to be happening soon with the proceeds from an event like this. So, again, please, looking forward to seeing everyone out there. And that concludes my report.
Right, thank you. And next we have Department of Finance Administration and Planning, Council President Phil Zambrano.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any finance committee report tonight. The Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency meeting was canceled on August 15th. The next meeting will be on Tuesday, September 18th. The Milltown Historical Preservation Committee meeting was held on 7/27, which was a Thursday. The folks there are always reaching out to, always to open up the space and for all the residents of town. They had two asks. One ask was to have one of the trees trimmed in front, which was already taken care of. The other ask was to repair the back staircase to the front-facing building, so that it could open up the building as soon as possible. So again, like I said, the tree trimming has been taken care of, the back staircase is in the process of being taken care of. And then I have the, senior moment here.
Senior report.
Senior, the senior report, yes, so. So, the following activities take place each week at the Milltown Senior Center. All these activities include aerobics, line dancing, chorus, men's club, arts and crafts, bingo, sweating to the oldies, and of course, a monthly visit from the VNA nurse. As a reminder, there is no cost for Milltown residents to see the VNA nurse. Senior Center also offers the opportunity to join the Milltown Senior Center Citizens Club, $10 a year, and for more information, you can reach out to Bob Skarzinski at 732-296-1159. You do not have to join the senior citizens' citizens' clubs in order to participate in any of the Office of Aging programming and activities. So, one activity still to happen in August is next Monday, the 28th, at 12 p.m., they're having a social services bingo. There are three bus trips still to happen in August. One is tomorrow, August 22nd, there will be a bus trip to the Christmas Tree Shops. The bus will leave at 9:30 a.m. On Wednesday, the following day after that, there will be a bus trip to the Shrip Box in Point Pleasant, and that bus will leave at 10:45 a.m. And then finally, on Tuesday, the 29th, next week, there will be a bus trip to Taverno on the Lake. The bus will leave at 11:30 a.m. Senior Water Robots is held twice a week, on Wednesdays and Fridays. There are three dates left in August, August 23rd, the 25th, and August 30th. On Tuesday, just wanted to bring this to everybody's attention, I think the mayor didn't notice, mention this before, that on August 1st, the New Jersey Department of Motor Vehicles had their mobile unit at the Senior Center. They were there for four hours and made it available for folks to return their license plates, which I did, and for folks to process and put through the paperwork to get their real ID. As, all additional dates will be scheduled, so that means the mobile unit will be back. Don't know yet what date it will be back in September.
I think it's the 10th.
First week, second week, but as that date becomes more available, it'll be communicated out to everybody. And as always, with all trips and presentations, there's going to be a signup sheet on the bulletin board at the Senior Center, or if you're interested in participating, you can call Debbie Cuddy at 732-296-0681, or register via email at decuddy@themilltownborough.com. As a reminder, the Senior Center will have summer hours through the month of August, and will close at 12 p.m. every Friday throughout the summer. The Senior Center will be working on an online calendar, so that will be accessible to anyone, so that you can see what events are there, as an additional way to view everything that's available. My hope is that this calendar will be in play, will be in use before the end of the year, so that if anyone wants to request the use of the Senior Center for any reason, they can see if that Senior Center has already been booked or not. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And thanks to Assemblyman Stanley for organizing the mobile units. I was out of town that day, but I'm looking forward to, I have stuff to do when they come back in September, so that's great. All right, next we go to the Administrator Report. Ms. Larson, anything to say?
I have no reports tonight.
All right, and then we have our Borough Engineer Report, Mr. McLemus.
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a short report tonight. One is a further update on the water system, improvements on Highland and Columbia Drive area. The work is continuing. What's happening right now is they're putting in what's called a bypass, which is an above-ground water system which will serve the residential uses while we're removing and replacing a new water line. Intent there is, because the road is narrow, and you've got a sanitary sewer, a water line, and a gas main, and there's limited space to remain in, that's why the bypass is required, so that we can disconnect the old and still provide water service to the folks in the neighborhood. Other things on Haguenpatein, just to update the mayor council regarding the status there. The DOT has required that the borough install handicap ramps at the South Main Street improvement at the intersection. This is something that was not on our plan. They've asked to have it done. We have contacted the county, who has approved that the DOT is funding it, it's included in your grant from the DOT, so there's no additional cost to the borough. It's included in your grant from the DOT, so there's no additional cost to the borough, but that's one of the reasons why the job's not been closed out. Lastly, we have plans to bring concept maps to your next meeting. I'm going to ask our staff to be here with me to present the various options on the Albert Avenue Walkway Project, so just keep that moving. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our Borough Attorney, Mr. Clarkin.
No report this evening.
All right, thank you. The mayor's comments. I know we mentioned that the Milltown has the 9/11 celebration, so just to note that that would be our normal Monday meeting, so both of the council meetings in September will be on Tuesday, so it'll be Tuesday, September 12th, and Tuesday due to the 9/11 memorial, and also Tuesday, September 26th, due to the Yan Kippur holiday falling on that Monday evening. So, just, just make a note that it'll be two Tuesdays in September. We did mention PSENG. I know it's been a big inconvenience and there's, I have heard from a lot of businesses on, on Main Street, so there is a government, we did have the meeting a couple of weeks ago, we have another meeting set up. However, I do have a contact with the Governmental Affairs Coordinator for PSENG, so I spoke to him earlier today. So, we do have some materials that we've put out. Hopefully, we have it on the website. I'm going to read a phone number, but we'll make sure that this gets on the website. So, we said, "Report a concern," and, you know, they have certain obligations that they need to do, but if you have any questions or concerns about the project, please contact PSENG at 1-833-661-6400, or visit www.pseng.com/gaswork. So, they have information, and we'll make sure that this is shared, on what they need to do. I don't, I don't recall if we got into it after the, at the last meeting, but when they started on North Main Street, they were going to replace gas lines. As they got into it, they realized that there was a bigger problem, and it has now turned into an entire gas main replacement. So, that is why it has taken longer on North Main Street. It's been, you know, an inconvenience, and it's, it's hard to see the businesses that are along Main Street be affected, but they also have a program where they have, can, you know, submit to PSENG if they feel that their business has really been negatively impacted. So, we will make sure that, they should have all gotten some notice from PSENG, but I will be going along Main Street to make sure that they're all aware that PSENG is responsible for, you know, the disruption, and they have assured us that they are trying to finish the North Main Street part as quickly as possible, hopefully by the end of August, and be done with that by the time school starts. And then, we get to look forward to them coming back and repaving, and then finally finishing up. And as we've said many times, you know, when we go to heat our houses, cook, all of the things that we, you know, need the gas lines to do, it's a good thing, but it's been, you know, a major pain point for people living on Clay Street, for the detours and the businesses on Main Street, so, you know, we're, we're getting closer and, you know, please be patient, but if you do have concerns about, you know, we've talked about the remediation and, and things like that, while we want to track it with a report of concern, if it's really something important, feel free to give them a call directly as well. Okay, so now we'll go to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business to bring before the council this evening? Hearing none, I'll close old business and I'll move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business to bring before us this evening? Hearing none, I will close new business and move on to audience comments. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker has finished. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Yes, ma'am? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Teresa Russo. I live at 16 Growlack Drive, and thank you for taking my comments.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name of your street.
Growlack. Two things, I did notice that public service had marked the street. I called public service, they said it was, you know, for the borough. I called the borough and nobody could really tell me what was going on for my street. It's a relatively new street, so I wouldn't think that it would need to be worked on as opposed to, you know, one of the older streets. So, I was just wondering if anybody knew what was the plan for my street?
I'll leave that to Mike. Is there anything, Growlack, which is down by?
Off of Van.
Off of Van Lu.
I know it's relatively, I know. Yes, you are correct, Growlack Drive is a relatively new street. I'd say probably about 20 years, 25 years. I would be surprised if they're doing anything. I think that the work, or the striping or the, what you see in the street is the work looking at Van Lu Avenue, so that'd be where I would guess that would, but we can check it out for you tomorrow, and if you leave your number, I'll be happy to call you back.
Okay, great. And my second one is just if you could check the street lights, because some of them are out, and I didn't know if that was public service or?
That's our utility department. And I will tell you, if you have any, if you ever have anything like that, you can call, but the best way to track that is to go on the borough website and do a report of concern, and say, "Street light out," and that way, it goes to the direct, right person.
Actually, I thought it was public service, but then hearing the report, I said, "Oh, I can mention it there."
That's us.
If you could, on each pole, there's a number, so to really help them, if you just say, "On this pole number, the light's out."
But at least say your street.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just add to that mark outs sometimes if a neighbor might be getting a fence put in, or anything like that. I don't know if any of them have.
Oh, no, it's all public service with plaques and?
Yeah, because when you call for a mark out, even if you're putting a fence in, you'll have the borough mark out the water line, sometimes the sewer line as well. Public service will mark out theirs with yellow, and if there's any buried electric, that'll get marked too.
So, when I did call public service, they gave me the name to look it up. I looked it up on their website, and it said the Borough of Milltown. So, I, I did all my checking.
You did, you do, for sure. Thank you.
Yes, gentlemen, I know how.
Yes, yes, sir. Good evening.
Madam Mayor and Council, my name is Roger Bartholomew, 43 Ackerman Avenue, and I have a request of the council to memorialize one of our past mayors. Rather than ask that a street or a park be named for him, it's a rather simple request as far as I can see. It's for Dr. John Vanderputte, who was mayor, who was on council and mayor a couple of terms, and he was one of the founders of the Little League. He also coached Little League. He was president of the Lions Club when the Lions Club spearheaded the redoing of the mud hole and dredging that and creating the first paved pool for the borough. And he was also the prime mover for retaining our own electric department and keeping that within the borough's control, which is ours, one of our main sources of income for the town. My request is that I would like to have a small plaque in his memory placed on the new substation somewhere, small, even if I have to contribute towards the cost of the plaque, I would like to have one placed there in his memory.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is Dave for the Utilities Committee? Can we look into that?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
No, you mentioned earlier, he's the son-in-law of that mayor.
Yes, no, I, I, yes, and, and I know you've mentioned it before, and, you know, thank you, thank you. Good evening. How are you, Gary?
Good, how are you? I'm Gary Pizzanti, Cleveland Avenue. I'd just like to do something a little light tonight. I'd like to talk about the, speak about the benefits of volunteerism in Milltown. Some things have been brought up as far as Fire Department Rescue Squad, but I'd like to say things in my own words of appreciation. We have our dedicated and brave Fire Department volunteers. They go through rigorous and time-consuming training to be able to save you, your loved ones, and your home when an emergency arises. Our steadfast Rescue Squad heroes, because of life-saving training, have helped so many of our neighbors, including senior citizens, they're professionals and deserving of recognition. Scouting is to be commended for its stoic leadership, helping children become civic-minded and patriotic adults. Our children being such a precious asset deserve the positive attributes scouting has to offer. Our Little League and Rec League coaches deserve recognition for the many hours invested in teaching the children skills, self-respect motivation, fair play, and good sportsmanship. And religious teachers such as CCD educators need to be praised and respected for volunteering to instill spirit and faith into the hearts of young children. I've been a volunteer in some of these endeavors, and it has made a better person out of me for sure. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I couldn't agree more. And, and what's nice, Gary, is looking around this room, it's evident. We have a former Little League president, we have the head of the Milltown Education Foundation, we have a relative of the Little League, and so many, library, planning board, scouts, you know, so many people, and, and the beauty of the setup that we have here with the borough is we have all of the committees that we rely on people from town to get together with their liaison and put together Milltown Day, or talk about revitalization, all, all of the things, and that, that's something that I've been really proud of, that really has blossomed in the last few years of getting the people on the borough committees to become involved in our town. So, we're very fortunate to have so, so many people to do great things for our town, so thank you for bringing that up.
Do people think this is just automatic, that people help out, but it's just, I think, volunteers need to be praised at times?
Exactly, 100%. Agree, agree. Thank you.
And I will pass along your kind words to the Fire Department and Rescue Squad.
Yes, yeah, and for those who aren't brave enough to be a fireman, you know, that takes a lot of training, but there are so many ways to volunteer here in town, and I'll put in a plug for our citizen leadership application, so if you're interested in becoming a committee member, all you have to do is sign a citizen leadership app, and we would love to have your input for anything that goes on here at the borough, and, and we'll, you know, look on the website for all, all sorts of ways to get involved. So, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir? Good evening, Joe, how are you?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may remember, I was here last month.
State your name and address for the record.
I'm so sorry. Jopie Pataza, 15 Bruce Court. You may remember, I was here last month talking about utilizing the parking available behind the library, and if the mayor and council sees fit to put signage on Main Street both ways and on West Church indicating that there is 64 parking spots behind the library, very close to Main Street and the downtown area. So, it seemed to resonate with you, or that, that was my read anyway, so I kind of piggybacked on that idea and said, "Why not put electric charging stations for the residents who have electric vehicles?" And I looked into a company called Flow, and they basically come out and they do all the legwork, they see if the, if the area is suitable, if they have a charging capability with the local electric utility, and then they say yea or nay to the possibility of, you know, with your approval, to go ahead and, and install. I think they, don't quote me, I think they are looking for any site, they're looking for at least four spaces to electrify, and, you know, since it's utilities, I'd like to hand over my information to Councilman Potter, and you could take it from there.
That's great. No, we've been talking about that a long time, so thank you for doing that work, and, and that's something the Utilities Committee can definitely follow up on, as well as the?
Signage.
Yeah, signage.
Signage.
And, and the parking, you know, we'll, we'll ask the folks to take a look at, you know?
Yeah, there, there are 60, I counted, 60 parking spots and four handicap spots, and it's, it's pretty empty, so if we could, you know, interject the signage and put some charging stations, I think it'll be used a bit more.
And actually, I have a question for you, Mike. Is there any incentives for the town also to have these EV charging stations?
The company Flow that Mr. Pataza brings forth, we're not sure, we haven't worked with them directly, but there may be some, because obviously, there's some income generated by this process, and you'd have to look into that to see what the details are, but you certainly may have some opportunity there.
Okay. So, Joe, you can forward me all the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
So, Mike, I got a question. So, the people have to pay for the electric if we hook it up?
Yes, they do. Usually, they put their credit card, but in this case, I, I don't know sure, I'm not sure how this company then collects its revenue, so there's a, there's something called the power purchase agreement, which is similar to this with the solar power, where you actually buy the power from the center company. This is similar, so we're looking at the details. We've been sent some, we're trying to get, we'll be able to report to the community and obviously back there.
Perfect. Thank you, Mike.
Mike, didn't the state have some grants out there, or I don't know if it was the state or the feds, had some grants out there for small municipalities to put in electric charging stations where they were going to foot the bill?
There may be, Council, I was looking at, and they're encouraging that also because obviously they encourage you to use the electric vehicles.
And, and it doesn't have to be any particular company, I mean, we're, whoever we can get the best you. Right, exactly.
For the installation, that's right.
Right. Cool. Anyone else? Yes? Good evening.
Good evening.
Charles Ariniak.
Charles David Ariniak, 322 South Main Street. Back in May or June, we finally had our PSENG stuff done, and we had a sandpit, as I told you, last meeting, for a while. It, it got to the point where not last Friday, the Friday before, she was taking my son to one of his appointments. She went out and she was, she went, she went running after him. She fell in the sandpit that's been sitting there open for, for two months. She, she fractured her ankle in front of my kids. We saw her laying on the ground in pain and agony. It never should have happened because that pit should have been filled properly right God bless Officer DeLorenzo. He came as soon as Pastor Riley called 911, and he said he can't move her. She, she's completely understood, but she was still laying there in pain, my kids looking through the front window. My neighbors and my son, they, they did as best they could to help, you know, calm her. The Rescue Squad came down, thank, thank you for the Rescue Squad, and they're volunteers, they, they did an amazing job. Just a fact that it was a sandpit that was sitting there for two months. It's unacceptable, and, and yes, I reported the concern after the last meeting, but nothing happened. And then, finally, after, after my wife's accident, a neighbor of ours was discussing, just having a conversation at Mike's Country Market about it, and, and somebody who apparently was supposed to be filling in those holes, went in there and, and filled our holes and filled, almost every sandpit is filled now, and, and that's just, that's not right. It shouldn't take a conversation between some private residents and somebody happening to overhear what happened to get something like that fixed. It was a safety hazard for, for months, and it's not right. My wife is out of work now because of this. It's not, it's not right. My kids are- My kids are traumatized from this, and, and it's not right. And I'm very upset with all of you. I, I, I do my best to respect you, and... It, it never should have gotten this far. PSENG, not, don't get me started with PSENG, but it's just, it, it's, it's unacceptable. They, they need to be held accountable because it, I, I've also, I don't know if it's true, but I've also heard that it happened to somebody else, too. So, just the fact that our residents are getting hurt because of PSENG's failures to, to remediate what they're supposed to do in, in a timely fashion, i, it's not right, it's unacceptable. And, I'm, I'm glad they're having the talks with them, but it, my wife has a, a, my wife fell down and my kids saw it, and she's out of work now for a while. So, just, please, make sure that PSENG is fixing things right away, and not just leaving a pile of sand or that, that settles with rain and stuff, and then becomes a hazard on our own properties. They're supposed to remediate it, not months afterwards, it should be done immediately. That's all I have to say.
So I'm sorry to hear that, and I hope you're, wish her speedy recovery. And if you don't, if you'd like, I will certainly share your personal contact information with the person from PSENG, if you'd like to share your frustration with him as well.
All right. What does it have to say?
All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close audience comments and go to council comments. Does any member of the council have any final comments this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Christopher Jones and Joseph Ion for joining the Milltown Fire Department, and also Mason Battalion, and, uh, Charles Barnes for the cadet in the Fire Department. And I'd also like to thank Ralph for trimming the trees over on, uh, Mill Pond Park on Coltway Avenue.
Anyone else?
Uh, I've got two or three here. I'll go through quest, uh, through them pretty quickly, um, and this one, I'm going to, I'm going to fire over to, uh, Mr. Clarkin. Just out of curiosity, um, what happens when the planning board makes a decision, uh, to allow or disallow a property to be turned into a two-family, or whatever, and then that decision is completely disregarded, and the person proceeds as if the planning board had no decision? What is the course, or what is the recourse that's allowed by the borough for, for addressing that?
The borough could file a complaint in order to show cause in a superior court to restrain the operation of the two-family use.
And that would be done through the planning board, or is that through the, uh, through your office?
That would be through our office. You could also file a municipal court complaint. The problem with that is the municipal court does not have available the remedy of a restraint, only a fine.
So municipal court is fine?
Superior court is a fine?
And superior is restraint?
Correct.
Do I have that correct? Uh, my second comment, um, I was down in Interlaken this weekend, um, and I got to tell you, they had a speed bump there on a road that I usually go about 25 miles on, admittedly 25. Um, and I couldn't understand why everyone was stopped in the middle of the road, and it was because they had a speed bump there with a nice sign, and I tell you, it slowed people down, because sometimes you get people flying through there, and sometimes you don't, but that certainly made a big difference in the flow of traffic, um, almost to like an annoying point where you're like, "All right, come on, guys, let's, let's move," and then you realize what's going on, and you're like, "All right, slow down." So, uh, I think it's something that we need to continue to look at for the safety of our town. And, uh, last but not least, as a council member, you know, sometimes we get to do fun things up here, and, uh, tonight, I get to wish my son a happy 11th birthday, so. Sorry I'm missing dinner, but happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday again. Hopefully, we'll get you home soon to have some cake.
Damn, between your mom and Everett.
Uh, right. Anyone else have any comments? Hearing none, I will close council comments. My closing comments, um, I hope you've all had a nice summer. It's hard to believe we're heading back to school, so I wish all of the children the wonderful last few weeks of school. Please be safe as you head back. We'll see you in, in mid-September. As you gathered from, um, earlier in the meeting, I want to wish our clerk a very happy retirement. It's been a pleasure working with her over these last few years, and we wish her well in all her new endeavors, so thank you to Mimi for all of her service to the borough. Just to follow up on that, you know, I don't want you all to think that we don't work collaboratively. We have, we have a process set up, we're very open, we're very honest with each other. You know, we may not all agree, but we certainly want to make sure that everybody's included, and, you know, I'm sorry if some people feel that they're not included in every decision, but as we all know from working together, you know, there's a process and, and we follow it. You know, we've done that for, for many years, and it's, it's worked fairly well, and I'm sorry we went a little off the rails tonight, but we're, we're all working together for the citizens of Milltown, so thank you for that. And with that, that's the end of my comments. Now we have an executive session, so who reads 202, who reads 230, 2023? Is that you, Mimi?
I can read it for you, and then you'll do the announcement.
Okay.
A resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown authorizing the discussion of matters in a closed session pursuant to statutory exclusions, 10:4-12, and in this case, we'll be discussing litigation.
Thanks.
So the Borough Council will be entering an executive session.
The public will be excluded from this portion of the meeting to permit the Borough Council consider matters appropriate for discussion in such a session. The borough will briefly convene into the municipal conference room, and thereafter, will return to the meeting room to an open session. At this time, I'd like to defer to Attorney Clarkin for an explanation of the subject matter to be discussed.
Certainly, Mayor and Council. The borough unfortunately is involved in a zoning dispute. In particular, we have one of the borough residents who was advised by your former zoning officer that he could open a business at a particular location, when in fact, under your zoning ordinance, that business would clearly not be allowed in that location. There's some strong evidence that this resident incurred a substantial amount of expenses and expended a lot of time, uh, and has a monetary claim against the borough. When we go into closed session, uh, I can give you more detail and lay out four different options for you to consider. It is possible that you may preliminarily in the closed session decide on one of those options, and if you do, uh, and the option is a settlement, then when you come back into open session, it is entirely possible for members of the public that there will be a resolution to approve a settlement.
Okay. Thank you. So may I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 230, 2023, to go into executive session?
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Collins, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zamboura.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Rivalinski.
Okay, so we're going to go. Thank you all for being here, and you're welcome to stay if you like, or if not, have a good year.
Thanks, to see you.